Thank you and good evening. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, March 13th, 2024. Present this evening, we have Daniel Edmiston, Vice Chairman, Thomas Chanacki, Clerk, Richard Clark, Member, David Durgan, Member, myself, Guy Horn, and William Scanlon as our Town Planner. First item on our agenda is a note that the meeting is being recorded. Second item, Pledge of Allegiance. Under New Business, Approval of Minutes from February 21st, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to the actual approval of, I would like to compliment Aura. You've done a masterful job of making us sound better than we really are. It's appreciated. I mean, you could skip the video and go right to the minutes. That said, I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes as presented for February 21st, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Everybody was here, so I have two copies here we can sign. I'll pass them around in a second.
Oh, sorry. I forgot to pass the other one on.
On this one? On this way now?
Oh, just for a moment.
Okay, next up on our agenda is A&R Plans. First one, for 6 Charlton Road. Representative of Goddard, 4 Charlton Road. Create a parcel to convey to 4 Charlton Road. We have somebody here for this? Okay?
Good evening, Chairman Horn, members of the board. My name is Joe Duquette. I'm here on behalf of Don Goddard as personal representative of the estate of Joseph R. Goddard.
Okay.
It's a bit of a mouthful, but the request is pretty simple. The A&R Plan, which Bill is thankfully unfurling for you here, is to effectuate a variance that was obtained by the two owners of the property, 6 Charlton and 4 Charlton Road. As a brief background to why this A&R is needed, the property owners have been in a longstanding litigation over confusion regarding the drafting of a confirmatory deed between the parties, which brought into question the actual ownership of the parcel shown in the middle there. In an attempt to resolve the litigation, the parties agreed to cut off a portion shown as parcel A and reconvey parcel A back to the owner of 4 Charlton Road. This brought the property back into compliance with all but the frontage on Mill Street. The frontage was pre-existing non-conforming at 85 feet. The reduction brought it to 73 feet. The Dudley Zoning Board of Appeals approved the variance on February 1st, and the appeal period lapsed on March 4th. So now we're here before you tonight for plan endorsement to effectuate the variance.
Okay, so I guess the changes that were made wasn't able to correct the setbacks on the sides, right?
Correct, and the lot area.
Okay. So it's 1,000 square feet. So this will put it over 10,000 square feet, okay. All right. Any questions from the board?
So this is, in effect, settling the issue of this litigation, right? So what happens if we don't approve this? They go back to court and fight it out?
Most likely.
All right. We don't want to enrich the lawyers any more than we need to.
Amen.
All right. If it's... Any other questions, Mr. Chairman? Any other questions? No? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the A&R Plan as presented for 6 Charlton Road. Is that correct? I believe the address is indicated.
Six and 4.
Six and 4 Charlton Road.
Yes. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Okay. So we need to sign two copies, Phil?
And the MyLok.
And the MyLok. Okay. So you guys can sign one of those. If you want to just fold that one up and roll it up and sign this one, Phil?
Easy enough? Yep. Well, largely thanks to you. Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Let me choose the other one. There's one more. Oh, no. God, we killed another tree in this one.
Everybody's autographed. Are they ever?
That's a good point. Especially because they don't have their minutes online. They definitely don't have videos anymore. They don't even tape them. Don't tell me you're at the end of this process now.
End of our involvement in this process, so thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, next item on our agenda, Pier Pond Estates, Lot Line Change Only, Depot Road, Charlton LLC. Mr. Sekura. There he is. Okay, so Mr. Sekura, can you explain what's happening here? Eleven, it says 11 and what? 11 R and 12 R.
I was just a little busy over here.
Okay. Can you tell us what's happening with the lot line between 11 R and 12 R?
Okay, what happened is when I sold the house on Lot 12, I took a piece off of that lot, about a half an acre, because I was a little suspicious about some of those lots not perk, all right? So I took some money off of the deal to the buyer. And I told him, listen, if I don't need it, if I don't need the land, all the lots perk like they did, I will give you the land back.
Okay.
That's the deal.
So you're just returning the...
I'm just returning the land like I promised the person.
Okay. So the Lot 12 is going up to 3.11 acres and Lot 11 is going to be at 2.08 acres?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's the proposed lot line though? Yeah. If you have proposed lot line.
This is what it's going to be like. We don't know what it was like prior to this.
Okay, so this is the after.
This is what it's going to be like going forward.
Okay.
So basically, he's adding a half an acre to Lot 12.
Yeah. Slide into the right.
Was the half acre you were talking about that you were saving for yourself, was it in the back, making Lot 11 shaped like an L?
Yeah. Yep. Well, before it was like, after we took that half an acre off Lot 12, it was like a L shape.
Right.
Now it's a straight line.
Oh, it's like a pie shaped?
Like original.
Okay. So you're putting it back to the way it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Original plan.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the A&R for Pier Pond Estates relative to Lots 11 R and 12 R as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Wait, Mr. Chairman, question.
Sure.
We have three waivers. We have to accept those first?
Oh, there's waivers in there? Waiver, mm-hmm. Would it be a waiver for a lot?
They're just marked on the A&R plan.
Okay. It's the second to last page in that section. Oh, there was waivers on the previous one. There was two waivers on the previous one. We didn't catch that. There was 6B and 6J. Profile of existing grades in A&R. Name, north point, date, scale. Okay, let me see that. Did we catch Mr. ... We already signed that one, Bill. Can we go back and just say that we're going to approve those waivers? No?
I don't think so.
All right. All right, so the waivers on the one for...
We have to throw the motion.
Well, you're already...
We've already approved it.
No, for this...
For this one, though, we're on top of it. So it's topography at two-foot intervals, evidence that each lot to be created has adequate access, including road, access to the road.
Yeah.
Profile of existing grades. What's even included by...
The access.
The house number 26 is already built?
Yes.
So the house is built. There's no topography.
There's no access issue, yeah.
There's no access issue, yeah. There's 152 feet of frontage on each of them. Almost 152. All right. So Mr. Clark, would you like to start with making a motion for the waivers?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we approve waivers as indicated on the submission checklist as E, F, and J.
No, it would be E, I, and J.
E, I, and J. I'm sorry. Apologies to my automators.
No problem. We have a motion for the waivers. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the waivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Okay.
We're done.
Now we have to make a motion for the...
Except the A&R. All right. Back to the beginning. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the A&R as presented for our lots, 11 R and 12 R.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Also... He's got it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so we're going to sign two copies again here. Mr. Chanacki seconded.
We've got them all here.
Two. One should be missing.
Uh, Guy Horn, me, Tom, I don't know who that is.
Dan?
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're one short.
No. One, two, three, four.
One short. Yeah, we need Tom on there. No, Tom's here. We've got a tape, Mr.?
Not only do we kill trees, we get a lot of exercise here.
Planting more trees.
All right. Thank you.
So that takes care of the A&R plans for this evening, but we have another issue with Pier Pond Estates. Discussion with Tony Sekura regarding eliminating a street light. So where would you like to eliminate a street light?
Just because it's one light on the next pole. So that would...
So there would be two side by side, basically, what you're saying?
Yeah. So I think it's going about 80 feet away from their light. I mean, I just want to bring it over to the...
Where is this right now located?
It's on Pier Pond, the beginning of my street.
Okay.
On Pier Pond Road.
Yeah.
And Noble Street.
Yeah.
Supposed to be a light at the intersection, but because it's a light on the next pole...
It's already lighting up the intersection?
Yeah, that's...
Um, I guess we wouldn't be able to send out... We wouldn't be able to send out graves because you'd have to go at night to see if it's lit up or not. I don't know. How do... What's the board's pleasure? You want to just go take a look at it and get back to them?
We do have...
It's supposed to have at the intersection, so...
Yeah, but if it's one pole away and it's close enough to light everything up, it might be okay. We have to just go take a look.
We don't know what it looks like right now.
Yeah. Is that okay with the board? Will we go take a look at it?
So, Mr. Chairman, there was a plan drawn. There was a plan approved. It was in there. So I think that before we go on just voting to eliminate something, we need to get some kind of information.
We're not voting to eliminate.
Let me finish, please. We have to get some kind of information from Chief of Police, possibly, and some couple other people. I just think really, really just eliminating streetlights just because, I don't think that's right.
Right, we're not...
He's gone through the whole entire plan process. His whole thing was planned at some point in time, had engineer's approval. So I'm reluctant to...
The issue is with the length of this subdivision, that light may not have been there when the original subdivision was approved. How many years ago, Tony?
I'll say about 18.
18 years ago?
And I would say remove the other one, be the one that's planned by the intersection. That would be my take on it.
Okay.
If there's too much light.
It's no big deal. I mean, so I decided to bring it up, but if it's a problem, I just put it in.
Okay. Or if you want to see about having that light, that's one pole away, moved to the intersection, that's...
Well, there'll be a nightmare.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in terms of the subdivision rules and regulations, the number, style, and placement of streetlights will be directed by the duly elected officials of the Town Dudley's Planning Board. So apparently, we do have some jurisdiction with regards to this, but it doesn't, as I'm reading this at least quickly, it doesn't indicate what distances they should be at or really anything to do with that. Maybe, as Mr. Edmiston suggested, referral to public safety might be a thought in terms of what they think appropriate and needed, given the situation on the ground as opposed to our talking about it here.
Ask them for their opinion? Definitely.
I'll go with the police department.
Okay. Can we ask the police department for their opinion, what they think?
Sure. If you do decide that you'd like to agree to the request, what kind of a process? Can we just be able to take a vote in a meeting to do that?
If the police department think that the light that's currently there is plenty for the intersection, then I think we could get a... As long as we could get a letter from them or an email saying that.
Sure.
And if they think that there needs to be another light, then we'll just let Mr. Sekura know that he needs to go forward with the original plan.
Okay.
Should be a simple drive-by, I don't think.
Yeah. So we'll do that. We'll let the police department do it as a public safety issue.
No big deal. I just...
Yeah.
Have the site pre-...
It's not typical that you have two streetlights in a row on two poles, but we'll see.
About 80 feet apart because that pole was moved when I built the street.
Yeah.
Because it was right in the middle of the street.
Okay.
So it moves, so it's kind of close. And again, it's no big deal.
What's... Is there a street number associated with this? If I were to drive by, would I be able to find it quickly?
It's across from 144 Pier Pond Road.
144. Okay.
So it's the intersection of Noble Street and Pier Pond Street. So the entrance to the subdivision, where the little stone walls are.
And two lights close together should be pretty ovacious, I would think.
Well, there's only one light there now.
One light now?
Yeah.
Yeah, one light there now.
All right, well, we'll see if we're able to buzz by then.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sekura.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Please.
Am I taking this with me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can just go ahead and record. Okay, thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda, Annual Update of Adult Marijuana Establishment, 35 to 37 Chase Ave.
Gentlemen, how are we tonight?
Very good. If you don't mind signing in?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
How are we doing tonight?
We're good.
Good. Well, appreciate your time. Um, I'll just go ahead and start, if you don't mind, give you guys a quick little update, so, as you know, we're going on almost three years of operation now here at thirty-five Chase Ave for the retail location.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, does the gentleman identify himself for the record in terms of the video?
Yeah, sure. Joseph Alattico, CEO of DMA Holdings, which is great, it's cannabis company.
Thank you.
Um, so we're going on roughly around three years of operation now, uh, here in Dudley. We have slowed down when it came to the cultivation and manufacturing, um, but by the end of this year, we'll be looking to start up the manufacturing. Um, we have a partnership that will be going into place, uh, and we will probably be, uh, turning the lights on there on the manufacturing side, and that'll help us on the wholesale side of things, but also create some more jobs here as well, on top of what we currently have for our, our retail locations. Uh, and then obviously will help us supply products, uh, to the rest of our stores, as we do have three stores here in the state now.
Okay.
Any questions for myself and business, or how are you doing, sir?
It's been three years, but it's only two years, right?
Is it?
Two thousand twenty-two?
Yeah, two years, sorry. Lot going on.
So what's up with this host community agreement that's part of, uh, the special permit?
Uh, what's up with it?
Condition number sixteen, you guys have just stopped paying the host community fee and donation?
Yeah, so there's been, oh, yeah, so there's a law, and the law says that the funds need to be used for adequate things, and it needs to be proven that the funds were used for adequate things. We've asked for several breakdowns, and we haven't received adequate breakdowns, so, uh, we're not holding, and all money is being aside, but we need to see adequate breakdowns. There are several towns that are going through these issues. Several companies are pushing back on a lot of these issues because, uh, just like anything else, we're trying to run a business as well, and we need adequate understanding of where capital is going, and we've asked for that, or attorneys have asked for that, and we haven't received the specific information that we've asked for, so we're not, I wouldn't say holding back, but we're asking for what we should be asking for, so. Uh, but attorneys are talking and working through that, and there's, I think every town currently is doing it. Caroline's Cannabis just got over a million dollars back from their town because the town couldn't provide them adequate information.
That was finished, that lawsuit's finished?
It's done.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's the impact aspect of this thing, is that correct?
Yeah.
The host agreement itself is still in effect?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what was the amount as far as the impact statement?
Not a hundred percent sure. I couldn't answer that today for you.
And that, is that just this year that, non-payment on that, or?
Yeah, it was just this year. I know that we've paid, I think, round numbers, about almost two hundred thousand dollars, and then we just asked for a rough breakdown of that from the town, and we've, haven't heard back the information that we've corrected.
The request, the request was to who?
Uh, not a hundred percent sure, but Nick Adamopolis, our attorney from Lake Shore Legal, has been handling all of that, so.
I appreciate your being here this evening, but in the past, Mr. Adamopolis has been your representative, so maybe some of those questions would have been better answered if he had been in attendance. I don't know what his schedule might have cost.
Yeah, he's, he had a conflict tonight, so I told him I'd step in.
All righty. Uh, you mentioned manufacturing to be started in some partnership, is I understood that?
Yeah, so there's several different brands that are on the market, not just here, but in the, on the West Coast or in different states, and, uh, there's a couple of companies that are interested in, I say partnership, more of licensing, where we'll be licensing those brands and uh, starting up the manufacturing. Really what we wanted to do is get our three stores up. Now that the market kind of corrected itself, cultivation got hit and impacted very well in the state where pricing went, went down, and, uh, you know, it is not cheap to run these operations. I mean, just to run a thirty thousand square foot cultivation operation on a monthly basis is over a million dollars, just your overhead, so, you know, if, when the market comes down and prices start to strike where they shouldn't, then, you know, it impacts your overhead, and it impacts your margins, and it impacts your Elka.
I just make the point that we do have a site agreement or site plan that's been agreed to, and hopefully
Yes, we do, for the manufacturing.
Third party coming in will be in agreement, or is...
That's already been a hundred percent approved under the manufacturing.
And is this somehow related to the, uh, for lease sign that was in front of the building? Is that how you found this, this partner, or is that, are they leasing the property, or is that something additional?
It's, it's ours. We're licensing their, their products and stuff like that, so we'll be operating it. We're fully operating it.
There's still a portion of the facility you're looking to lease, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's a portion behind the retail that's already designed, and it's approved by the town already, and, uh, we'll be moving forward on that portion. It's about eight thousand square foot.
All right, that's still not clear. Is there still a portion of the site that you're looking to lease? Is the sign, lease sign still?
We're not, we're not leasing. Oh, oh, so we are, I apologize. So we are leasing, uh, down below where thirty-five Chase Ave is.
Okay.
Uh, but it's already fully been leased out. That sign will be removed in the next two weeks.
All right, it has been leased out?
Yeah.
What's going in there?
Yeah, that's...
Just storage.
Storage?
Yeah, storage.
The drafters, where drafters was?
Where drafters was, yeah. And currently, the gentleman who owned drafters, his equipment is down there. He's leasing the bottom half of that.
So you've leased that to someone else for their storage, or you're gonna put storage in there?
I've leased somebody out for their storage.
Someone else for their storage.
Yes. The gentleman who we actually purchased the building from.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
You have records of this too? What did, how much did you say you gave the town for the host community agreement total?
Do have records. I actually have it, if you allow me. Give me one second, I can pull it up on my phone, because I did ask for the documents today.
They're saying that you only gave ninety-five thousand.
No.
Plus the thirty thousand at the beginning.
The number's here. Hundred and forty-four thousand is what they've been fully paid.
For just the host community?
Yes.
How about the excise? Do you know what that is?
The what?
Excise tax, the local three percent?
Hmm, I don't know what that is, no. But I know that just the host community is, uh, yeah, a hundred and forty-four thousand. I can get the excise for you.
Oh, yeah, donation. You guys pledged to, uh, the Dudley Women's Club, this fun zone, or as Richard calls it, the not-so-fun zone.
The what?
The fun zone outside. There was a fundraiser.
Okay.
Little playground out there.
Okay.
You guys pledged, well, Great Estates pledged, uh, ten thousand dollars donation, but they never paid?
Uh, I don't know about that. I don't know what the pledge was for, or when it was agreed to.
Was to rebuild the playground?
I don't know. I think there was a conflict there, and the conflict was, we're a cannabis company, and it was hard for us to donate to build a playground. Just like we can't donate, or we can't put any type of marketing, or donate to Little Leagues, or anything like that, so. Uh, I appreciate that, but we have done multiple donations in the town. We've set up multiple drives in the town. We've done multiple cleanups in the town as well. So there's been multiple things that we have done in the town that we legally can do, but we don't operate like a normal business. We have a lot of guidelines and rules that we have to follow. I have friends that ask me all the time to, uh, John Andrew Levin to ask me to sponsor his kids' sock, uh, baseball, and we can't do it, so.
Yeah.
There's certain requirements, and, uh, the playground was one of the requirements where we came back and said the Cannabis Commission wouldn't approve or like us doing this, because as much as we wanna give back in that way, we can't. The Boys and Girls Club asked me to do something too, and I can't, so it was a legal issue.
That's good to clear up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, uh, going back to something you mentioned in terms of cleanup, I believe that when you first presented, there was some discussion of, obviously, you're on the river, and, uh, I'm not sure what the state of the river is today, but, uh, not that long ago, it looked like there was ample opportunity for cleanup uh, in, in the area. Maybe not in your property necessarily, but if...
We do, we do a cleanup once a month throughout the whole road, all the, all the way down past Cinnies, all the way up the road.
Thank you.
My, my employees do it every single month.
Thank you, thank you.
And they put it out on the Dudley Webster Forum, they show, so we try, we try to do whatever we can for the community, so.
I do appreciate that, and I think all residents would, and shame on us that it needs to be done as frequently as that.
I mean, I can tell you this, that road, I, I've never seen more empty nip bottles in my life. So we pick up a lot of things there, I'll just be honest with you.
Well, for the record, there was a presentation before the Board of Selectmen not that long ago regarding nips, and you obviously can attest to the fact that that went nowhere.
Yeah, well...
So nips are eternal in Dudley.
We try to do, we try to do what we can for the community, for the town.
Please, please continue.
Yeah.
Our Earth Day is coming up, April twentieth. I don't know if you wanted to put it...
We've already advertised something to do something, so we are doing something there.
Thank you.
Yep.
When the board approved the modification of the site plan, there was the issue of the water main in Chase Avenue, and the result of the site plan modification was that you didn't need to upgrade
Sure.
water main due to the manufacturing process, but if you went to cultivation, which would require a lot more town water, that that main would have to be upgraded. What's your position on that? Have you done any more thinking about how you would handle that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a town main, right? I don't think it's up for us to have to upgrade it. Um, and to be honest with you, we're not really gonna be using, even if we did cultivation, we wouldn't use that much water anyways. Uh, and so manufacturing doesn't, we don't need, we won't bother that. But to be honest with you, I mean, we wouldn't have an issue of working with you guys, but that's a town main, so I don't think what we're going to be doing would affect that. Uh, and if it did, then I would look at that as a town issue, because again, that's not on our property. It's more of a town main than it is on our property. We looked to do a well on our property as well, and there was the option to do that as well. Uh, we're always willing to work with you, but, you know, I do think that that is an issue, no matter what, if, any business that went there is, it's an older main, so it needs to be upgraded.
I understand your position, but the Water and Suicision take the opposite point of view.
Of course I do.
Some discussion required.
I, I have no issue working with you guys. I, I've never, I'm not gonna give any issues, but when it comes down to the point, we have to, you know, we have to let you know our position, and we'll try to work with you on your position.
To the, to the planner's point, there's been a back and forth, and I, I believe, a number of meetings with your representatives and all the ensuing folks, and I don't know that that ever come to any resolution, or is that still ongoing, or is it just a dead letter?
It became a moot point because they didn't need the main to be upgraded at this point, but at some point, if
We kicked it down the road.
they increase their supply, then that issue will come up.
If for some reason we go down the road and build out the cultivation, then we'll come back and have that discussion.
Is it, again, if you don't recall, is there any resolution of it? All right, thank you.
But again, I'm always here, and we're always here to work with you guys, so.
Uh, there's only one other thing I would mention, Mr. Chairman, is I, I believe in the agreement we have with you folks, uh, your, what you've presented, and the information you brought forth today is actually we've been expecting in January, uh, January dates, as I recall, and I think that's stipulated by the thirty-first of January.
We canceled one meeting in February, and then...
Yeah, I understand that schedules are such, and fortunately, the weather didn't interfere too much this year, but I think the previous year, we, we went into March again, be, before we saw your, again, Mr. Adamopolis at that meeting. Uh, maybe in your calendar, perhaps you could pencil us in for twenty-twenty-five?
Sure.
And we could, uh...
January is what you're requesting?
Yeah, I think that's the date that we were aiming for. I think by the thirty-first of January, so.
Sure. Nick's better at these meetings than me, so I'll have him here next time.
Well, pin the tail on the donkey and get him here then.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Anything else?
Uh, your state license is all up to date?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
What's your plan with the old mill?
That's the main one. Uh, the old mill, what's our plan with it? Uh, storage currently right now, yeah, it's being utilized for some storage right now, and then eventually, if we do, did cultivation, it would be either, uh, on the side of where manufacturing is, or where drafters was. Um, but right now, it's, there's not much of a need for it, but we will look, we are heavily looking at the manufacturing side to, to handle that, so.
So if you're not cultivating currently, you're bringing product in from some of the locations. Is that, those your locations?
Uh, so there's other cultivators in the state, and there's, they wholesale product, so we have deals with them where we bring in product to our stores. Yep.
You guys can only buy it from Massachusetts places?
You can only buy it from Massachusetts places. Yep.
Well, if there are no other questions, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we thank the gentleman for his appearance, and look forward to seeing someone from, uh, DMA in twenty-twenty-five.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have requests for extension of the Fish Road definitive subdivision plan. Can you just sign in for us?
Yep.
I think it's very close.
Done.
Good evening. Jonathan Angelovich, DJT Properties, um, looking for a, I believe it's a one-year extension to our Fish Road definitive subdivision plan.
So the current, the current plan expires on April fifth, two thousand twenty-four?
Yes.
And you want it to go to April fifth, two thousand twenty-five?
Correct.
With the chair, uh, Mr. Angel, Mr. Angelovich, has anything changed, or are we all just changing calendars?
The major part of the subdivision plan, which I think most of the board knows, was part of a cultivation site, which was tied to the previous gentleman's company, and, um, there was, obviously, with the shift that he explained in the market, it significantly changed our perspective and our investment into doing that, so we are still looking into it, but at a significantly reduced scale. So, um, now that the market has kind of corrected itself, we're looking at it more heavily to see what size building would make it, I guess, call it, if, what the juice would be worth the squeeze, what's, you know, our best bang for the buck, if you will, so, um...
Which really changes business conditions, as opposed to...
What's that?
The plan essentially is to go forward with something at a reduced level
At a reduced level, yeah, yeah.
based on business conditions currently.
Correct, correct, and if that doesn't, if for some reason that's not feasible, we will come back to the town and come up with another solution to get a, uh, use out of the lot.
Oh, something else, okay.
Right. But it is, even the, the subdivision is a pretty large capital investment to put that section of road in the paving, so the, uh, the original plan was the funding out of the cultivation site wasn't go towards building that section of road, and since that hasn't happened yet, it's delayed that.
So if this cultivation doesn't go through, then the subdivisions...
Uh, no, I don't think we'll totally do, get rid of the subdivision plan. Um, it all depends on what we wanna do with the subdivision, that, other subdivision, that lot next, to be honest with you. I think no matter what, just with our agreement with the neighbors, the access to it will always remain where it's agreed to through that private roadway that we own off of Fish Road, so it may just be a more of a restricted subdivision at the end, if you will.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant the extension of the Fish Road definitive subdivision plan to expire on April fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Mr. Chairman, can I just ask John?
Sure.
The status of the sidewalk on Fish Road that you were going to put in, uh, from...
Yep, yes.
What's the status of that?
You know, I actually have to follow up with the new, um, highway superintendent, because that is technically a town job. We were supplying the labor and the material to build that, but because it is a town road, I believe they had, I mean, I know they had to do the fine with the DEP and get the conservation approvals and get DEP approvals, I know. It went back and forth with DEP a couple times, is my understanding, but I do believe there was a final set of documents that was issued late last year.
So you needed a, did you get Conservation Commission approval for that?
Yes, yep, yep.
Thank you.
I can follow up with the, uh, I can follow up with the new highway super and see where that lands, and I can just shoot you an email if that works, and kind of give you a status update?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, um, Mr. Clark made his motion a little bit quick. I have a couple questions.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Edmondson.
So no work has happened back there at all?
Nothing yet.
Nothing?
No. We boarded up the barn, that's about it, because it was, my insurance company wouldn't insure it.
But you are intending on still going forward with, with the sidewalk regardless?
The sidewalk, yes, we have to, just because of the, you know, the, uh, use of the pit, and we plan on utilizing that portion more moving forward, so that we will do.
Right.
So if I remember correctly, the neighbors were kind of against this thing, right? Went through numerous, uh, hearings, and we stand it for a couple weeks, the neighbors were all against... Went through numerous hearings, we stand it for a couple weeks, the neighbors were all against it, there were lights there and everything else. So, nothing has happened in the, in the past year, we don't know what's going to happen. What are the ramifications of not extending this?
If I may-
Well, if you don't extend it, then technically it expires.
Then it starts over.
To Mr. Edmondson's point, I think one of the big issues, as I recall, was the water in terms of wells. You were doing some testing.
We agreed to, once we moved forward with any construction, we would do testing on all the neighbor's wells. We did a test on our closest neighbor's well, which was part of our, we had to do that even to get approval from you guys originally. We did a prolonged pump test on our existing well at that house that's there at Forty Fish Road in relationship to that neighbor's well. There was one neighbor, I believe she was down the street further and across the street. She wanted to us to do that on her well once we began construction. So, that's part of, I think, part of the approval notes for the cultivation site approval.
Conditions of approval.
Correct, yeah. And we would still do that, I have no, we said it, that we have no issue doing any of that.
Extending this would, would extend all the conditions of approval that were agreed to prior.
And this is just for the subdivision, this has nothing to do with the cultivation site.
So, when is it-
The subdivision was just road improvements and a sidewalk improvement.
Correct.
There were no lots or houses being built.
Correct, yep.
If we don't have a cultivation center down there, if we don't have what traffic that they were expecting, we don't need the sidewalks.
So, there was no sidewalks in the subdivision plan, I don't believe, we eliminated them. So, all I was doing is, currently, right now, Forty Fish Road comes to an end at the barn in the house that we own. We were making it so fire trucks could have access to turn around in there, you know?
Call the truck.
Right. And we were, we were going to supply a cistern for that section of town, I think it was a ten thousand gallon cistern was approved. Twenty thousand.
That one was not included in the file, but it could be on.
Yeah, ten thousand gallons cistern was approved in the subdivision plan.
So, the sidewalk then, the residents would be concerned about the narrow with the Fish Road, so they asked for the sidewalk to be put in.
But it was just next to where your, the trucks were entering the site from that one part?
Yes, so we came, that was a completely, I think, different meeting afterwards. We came back to get, to agree to extend that roadway five or six feet on the right side coming in from West Delly Road, right? Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, all I'm trying to ask, it's more of a question than anything else, but if it is a typical subdivision, the first thing that happens is that the road gets built, right? Without your wear course, whatever else.
Yes.
You know, the infrastructure in place, that hasn't even taken place yet. But there's been no activity back there for the past year, and the neighbors are all against it. Why extend?
I mean, I've, I've talked to neighbors quite a bit, I mean, there's, we're very amicable, I've helped them in the past.
I'm not sure, Mr. Edmondson, in terms of your characterization, all the neighbors are against it, I don't know that-
They just had a bunch of points they wanted us to-
There were issues that we considered.
And we resolved them, I think that's why we got approval.
I, I think we got to some point of satisfaction on the part of at least some number of the neighbors.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Okay, well, the, the devil's in the door. But I, I don't recall it was all the neighbors against it, that seems a little-
But the immediate neighbor was here numerous times, I forgot the gentleman's name, and he was totally against it.
Yes, he lives actually, he's the furthest neighbor away.
That was the Mr. Lyons, my name, perhaps?
Correct, yeah, 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 yeah.
I think the immediate neighbor had an issue in terms of streetlights and his disrupting his sleep habits.
St. John, yes, Bob, yeah, yeah. And he was in favor of the project, he just didn't want to have the lights there, he didn't want the sidewalks in front of it. All the, all the subdivision plan really achieved in relation to the cultivation site was to separate, so we could actually keep the, where the existing houses separate, so we could utilize that as a separate building later on down the road. We could not, we could always make it one big lot and keep this cultivation site, just one lot if we wanted to, but we're trying to keep it as two separate lots. One of them is, whatever, is fourteen acres, and the other one's two acres, where the houses, or two and a half.
And you've got, you've already gotten the site plan approval for the cultivation site?
Correct, yeah, that was approved, I think, meeting or two after the subdivision plan.
That must actually be three-year approval.
Yeah.
So, there's an extra year already on that?
Yes.
So, this would just be bringing the subdivision up to the same level as-
We would probably come back next year and go for both at the same time, I think would make the most sense. Hopefully, we would have some construction started on the road by then, and we would hopefully have some type of cultivation site moving forward, for another plan.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and we, we just had the follow-up questions. Is there any, any more follow-up questions, or we can go to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed. Does that have to be unanimous, right?
No, Mr. Dergan, you're all set?
Yeah, I said that.
Okay, all right, so four, four yes, one opposed.
David Sodl, planning board, request-
Do you want to sign that as chairman, or you do want me to sign it?
I can, I can sign it.
Okay, you can sign two copies.
Sign two copies.
I'll keep one again, you get one.
Sure.
I don't want to record it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Got this back. Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, that brings us down to number six, discussion of the shared driveway standard zoning amendment, set a date for the public hearing. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this was the same one that we had tried to submit two times?
Well, we had a discussion about changing the special permit granting authority for the shared streets and driveways from the ZBA to the planning board. So, I've offered you that option, so there were actually two, two versions here. The first page is the language that was approved, that was brought forward to town meeting and did not pass. And then the second page is what it would look like if you wanted to change the special permit granting authority from the ZBA to the planning board. I don't know whether you are comfortable with leaving the ZBA as the special permit granting authority for common driveways to serve more than two lots, or if you'd like to have that responsibility, or at least propose it.
Okay, before I answer that question, this, this was all that was in, included in the original article was just these nine things? I thought there was twelve or thirteen things that we had. Is there one page missing, or am I not seeing?
I think there's a page missing, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so there's more to this, but-
I believe so.
Yeah, so your, your first question is, do we want to be, do we want to be in charge of, of special permits on more than two houses using a common driveway?
We have the example.
Currently, it's at ZBA.
Would the ZBA ask for your opinion on the site plan?
They, they ask for our opinion, but there's, is the, the action.
Correct, yes, we always refer our plans to other departments, too. So, I, I think David might have mentioned, you know, the possibility of changing it to the planning board. But I thought I would, you know, just modify it to see if you had any interest in doing that portion of it, or just keep the standards the way we had it last time.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I just think that the ZBA might be getting upset if they think we're trying to, trying to take their power away.
Well, that's possible, or they could say, well, you know, maybe you're better off doing it anyway, so.
One last thing on their plate, I don't know.
We did have a majority at town meeting, we did lose on the, the number that we think-
Sixty-six percent, yeah, two-thirds.
But, you know, if, if we thumb our noses, if you will, at the ZBA, it might put us further away from the desired number. So, I don't know that we need to ruffle any feathers needlessly.
That's, that would be my take on it, too.
Let's try to get this thing as, as vanilla as we can.
So, I'm going to be the minority once again?
All right.
So, since we're actually the one reviewing the plans, it just seems that it would be, have one entity that is in charge, that has the responsibility of everything. If, if, if someone's bringing a plan before, in front of us, and if there's a larger shared driveway, now they have to go to a separate entity to get approval for this, which takes longer, and then come back to us. There's this duality there that I'm not sure if it makes sense, because we don't meet with them in, in a dual meeting or in a, at both at the same time, whereas if it's solely the planning board, applicant could come here, we have one discussion, and it's taken care of right there at one time. That's my take.
Yeah, I, I was, and I was just going to say, how would you be, how would you be, would you be opposed if it was a dual position or a dual role, where both-
No, and I agree with the board, I don't want to, you know, you think, or make the, it's only board of appeals, think we're stepping on their toes, we're trying to take their responsibility. It'd be nice to have an offline discussion, ask them about their thoughts about it, I mean, maybe they would welcome it, maybe not, I mean, I don't know. But it's just, it's my thought.
Can we, can we send them a letter and see what their thoughts are?
Well, they meet once a month.
Oh.
So, and we are under a time pressure because of the public hearing. What I could do is advertise it with the change, and then if the ZBA was opposed to it during the public hearing process, we could just eliminate that and go back to the way it was.
Worst case, it could be amended on the town meeting floor.
Well, we haven't worked out before it got to the floor, it would be kind of messy to have that right on the floor.
But if we advertise it that we're both, that, that it's a voter, a vote is required of both boards? For approval?
Well, I mean, it's possible, you could, you could make it a site plan for the planning board and a special, and a special permit by the ZBA. That would be approvals by both boards. But I'm not sure, you know, if that's-
Or does it maybe like eliminate the two different stops, come and do it at the planning board, that's it? We're already creating A and R plans or whatever, you know, they're already coming here.
And I, I think we want to try to-
If they have a shared driveway, they have to go to the ZBA.
Yeah, I think we want to try to keep it as simple as possible if we're going to do it, so-
One-stop shopping.
So that they're not, they're not opposed to it.
Yeah, but then you look at, we vote five, and they vote nay on five.
Mr. Republican, I say, can I ask you two questions?
Sure.
Come to the thing. My name is Gurek Hrenalsky. I represent which I establish that lay Patriots were in Dudley, which gonna, a lot of people have a lot of questions, or just straight question. I got here a solar project on landfill. Landfill is not tapped, you cannot put solar there.
You can't ask questions yet, man, we're only talking about the streets.
We're trying to stay with the agenda.
Oh, I was sure I can, I can ask about another, I have to wait to the end?
Yeah, sorry.
We're, we're trying to stay with the agenda as much as we can, I'm sorry. Well, Mr. Chairman, I feel strongly both ways. I, I would like to see this enacted at some point, and as far as the ZBA's involvement or the ZBA's non-involvement, I don't have any particular fondness one way or the other, in terms of whatever the board pleasure might be.
Well, I guess my suggestion would be we should ask the ZBA with their preferences. But I think we should propose the change.
And then if they, if they're opposed to it, we'll put it back to the way it was. Okay, that, that sounds reasonable.
We have to advertise, that's a significant addition to the bylaw.
Right.
We didn't advertise it, we couldn't change it later.
Correct.
If we say it's in the proposal, we can always go back to the way it was.
Right.
We need a date for the public.
I was thinking April twenty-fourth.
That gives us enough time, two weeks advertising.
Oh, yeah. April twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
I may not be here, but you guys can obviously drive forward without me.
I think, I think one of the things we have to, we have to convey to the public is that, you know, for most parts, you know, shared driveways, who comes to us and is looking to do shared driveways? It's not typically homeowners, it's, in my opinion, it's more or less developers that are trying to save money on building, building multiple driveways or building, building a longer road to get to someplace. So, I mean, like, without, without these, without this bylaw in place, you know, developers can pretty, pretty much do what they want to do versus, you know, giving them some kind of direction. And that's all we're trying to do is, you know, for the most part, give direction to the developers that are trying to do this.
I mean, you could also, you know, change the number of lots that would be serviced by a common driveway. So, we had that five-lot common driveway plan. There was some discussion of, should that be a subdivision road because it's serving five lots?
Well, state subdivision is-
You could live at a common driveway to three lots if you wanted to.
Well, state subdivision rules, you know, five certainly is a subdivision.
Well, two or more is a subdivision.
Two or more, well, five is definitely, it's double two, and then I don't want to add.
So, to your point, you know, it's a way to kind of get around having to build a subdivision road.
It's a cheap street.
On the other hand, it allows access to backland for single-family homes. And it can be very expensive to build a subdivision street a long distance. A lot less expensive for a driveway.
And right now, these, all these additional bylaws that would, or specifications, regulations, whatever you want to call them, that we're trying to enact, is for anything that's more than two, two or more?
I think two is by right, I believe.
Right, but we would be adding-
One driveway can be used for two houses.
Right, but let's just say that the, for instance, number three, shared driveway shall have a minimum cleared width of twenty feet and a travel, and a minimum travelway of sixteen feet. So, that would be required for, for, for a common driveway shared, shared between two houses or shared between five houses.
Correct.
But what you're saying is we could, we could, we could make basically like two sets of laws, that one that would go up to two houses and then, or three houses, and then one that, if it's above three, it would be different?
Well, I mean, you could, you could do it for one or two, but I'm, my suggest, well, my thought would be cap it at three.
Cap it at three.
The way it is now, the highway superintendent reviews shared driveways of two lots.
Okay.
So, are you saying three or fewer? Wording, wording, three or fewer, or something like that?
Well-
Or maximum three?
Maximum three or something.
Maximum of three lots on a common driveway, or you could leave it the way it is, which is-
Three laws. How it is now.
Just like to get something.
So, there's no, no limit now, it just says more than two is a special permit from the ZBA. So, you know, it's also kind of, what do you think you can get town meeting to, to buy into as well?
Yeah, if you put more restrictions on, they're going to be less likely to vote yes on that.
Possible.
I think, I think we need to crawl before we run. Yeah, let's, let's just make the change on the planning board side as the permitting authority and see, see where that goes with our previous bylaw.
Okay.
And see where that goes, and then we can look at making it-
So, keep, keep the two or more language and-
Yeah.
But just change the SPGA to-
Yeah.
Okay.
We need, we don't need a motion to, to do that, do we, at this point, I don't think?
No.
Consensus, okay.
We're going to have a public hearing, and then we'll vote on it at, at the public hearing, so.
Okay, so the April twenty-fourth date, then, is down the calendar.
And I'll send the information to the ZBA to let them know what we're thinking about and ask for their opinion.
Yep, that would be much appreciated. Okay, the next one on the agenda is discussion of the short-term rental bylaw, possible votes afforded to the Board of Selectmen. So, this is number seven. Look on the new business.
Sorry, I tried to capture all the comments that we made at the last meeting, we went through it and we didn't come out of detail. So, I thought I'd put it back on again just to see if you had any second thoughts about it, or whether you're ready to-
The thing that strikes me is, is there's a lot here to unpack at town meeting, in terms of someone reading through this whole thing. You know, up to section nineteen.
So, it's a town, it's a town bylaw, it's not a, it's not a zoning bylaw, so.
So, there would be a separate article to enact the room occupancy tax.
Okay, so there would be two, two-
It's not related to this necessarily, but short-term rentals would have to pay the tax.
But you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to do one without the other, would you?
I, I agree. You could do the tax, I think, without having the short-term rental bylaw in place.
You could.
If you, yes, but then any, any short-term rental would have to pay the, the tax. It just wouldn't be regulated by the, with a bylaw.
So, it would be, then it would be strictly voluntary on their part, because we, we wouldn't even really know who they are or where they are.
Well, they have to register with the state.
State, but not the town.
So, they would have to pay, when they, you know, pay their state excise, they would include the town tax.
Automatically.
Automatically.
If the town had a bylaw in place for that.
Okay, and then if they didn't, if they didn't pay it to the state, the state would notify them that they're not properly paying their taxes? Or would it fall back to the town?
Good question, but I assume would be the state, maybe both, you know.
So, then would we wanna put the tax question first, before the bylaw?
Uh, I'm not sure how the warrant would be, you know, written.
Hopefully, town council can figure-
Strategize on that.
Yeah, town council could figure that out, 'cause-
Right.
Okay.
So, the thought would be that, you know, the selectman would then take this over? They could modify it if they want, so chose.
Go ahead.
Or decide not to go forward with it either, you know, if they didn't think it was a good idea after, after seeing it.
We would basically be presenting it back to the board of selectmen first, 'cause they'd have to, they'd have to be the ones putting it on the warrant.
Yes.
They would have to approve it.
And they would, and they would also be sponsoring the taxed article?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
So, by doing this, that would give us, that would give, that would fulfill what we agreed that we would do?
Right.
Do you think we have an audience member that would like to speak?
Yes, Joyce Narodzinski, Lakeview Ave, Dudley. I just had some questions about this, I didn't see, like, there was a big write-up posted today that I, I didn't get to read, there was a lot of information. So, I can only ask a couple of questions, basically. What is considered short-term rental? Are you looking at leases? Tenants-at-will, Airbnbs, hospitals?
Airbnbs, this is 30 days or less.
Right, okay, that's, that's, I just wanted to reference that. And this is already a bylaw?
No.
So, does there have to be a public hearing? Like, I don't know. It doesn't, so this just seems to be slid in, being slid in, and there's gonna be new fees, and it's a money grab. You're asking for $400 annual, for initial, and then $200 annually after that.
But that's to cover, that's to cover all the inspections that are needed by the town?
Yeah, the fire department and everyone else.
Board of Health.
And there are already state guidelines, like, the first chirp I've heard about all this was at a board of health meeting, which have been very entertaining lately. And Mr. Hannan made reference to all these things, and he made reference that, you know, we haven't, I, I will say, we haven't had an inspector because of staffing, you know, it's been very low, and now we have an inspector, so he can instill and oversee the state guidelines that are being set. I guess I was upset that he wants to make things stricter than state guidelines, so that's why I was like, I just, there's not enough information out there, and it just seems to be getting slid in. It really is like no, barely hear about, and all of a sudden I'm hearing all this, and I'm like, whoa, what is this all about?
It's, it's basically for Airbnbs, it's, it's a Central Mass Regional Planning-
Commission.
Commission, put the draft bylaw together, and we went back and forth with them, or actually, Bill went back and forth with them to work out the details for the town of Dudley so that it would work for us.
So, there's no input from, there's no, no hearing, no input at all?
Well, we're, we're, we were tasked to do it-
Yep.
And give it back to the board of selectmen, because this is gonna be, this is not gonna be a, the, the planning board only has jurisdiction over zoning bylaws.
Yep.
We, we write them and put them into the, bring them to the board, uh, bring them to the-
Town meeting.
Town meeting, sorry. And then it's up to the town if they wanna adopt it or not, because this is a, a general town bylaw, this is gonna go to the board of selectmen, they would bring it to the town meeting, they would represent it.
Yep.
And then if the people at town meeting agree to this, then it becomes a town bylaw and it's enacted.
And if it's not agreed to at town meeting, it is slid out.
As fast as it was in.
As faster.
Okay, that was just, I had questions, I wasn't sure, and-
Working on this one.
I needed to ask, and it just seemed like I hadn't heard anything about it, and all of a sudden-
In the background, I remember reading recently in the Worcester Telegraph, which is maybe not the most reliable source, legislation before the general court in Boston, I think it's referred to as the Municipal Empowerment Act, where the general court has decided that as revenues are not as expected at the state level, they're gonna kick the can down the road so that the towns will be empowered to increase the lodging tax, the meals tax, and the excise tax. And, of course, the general court will be held harmless in that because they won't be enacting a tax increase. So, hold on to your hat, this thing is maybe part and parcel of something else that's gonna be coming down the road.
Just another fee.
Yes, well, there-
Just wanted to add, I literally wrote down, what is this? Just so you know, I had the vision.
There's, there's no information out there, and all of a sudden we're gonna get hit with it at a town meeting.
Actually, we've had this on our agenda for a number of meetings, I don't know exactly how many. We would encourage everyone and anyone, not just the folks in the audience, but those on TV land, you know, to look at the town calendar, when meetings are coming up, the agendas are posted, minutes of previous meetings are available, and the video for meetings is also there. So, please show up, as you have, and bring more people with you, look at, we have all those seats available.
I want Airbnb just to impact my house if I want my own property, that's what I wrote.
So, also, we had, we had a joint meeting with the board of selectmen, and it was televised with, with the representative.
I work and I, you know, I'm on top of everything.
They're all on YouTube, you can go back and watch them. And the representative from Central Mass Regional Planning explained everything to us so that we could, you know, this is trying to be proactive rather than reactive, you know, we, we found out that there was already, what, six or eight in town?
Six, so far.
That are registered with the state.
Oh, Airbnbs or hospitals or?
Yeah, so we wanna, we just wanna, we don't wanna wait till there's 20 of them, and then we have to try to go figure it out, so, you know, this is, this is what it is.
Yes, those fees will just come trickle down to the people that are renting.
Well, we thank you, we do thank you for your, your comments, and please be, you know, be a regular.
The fees, of course, would be paid by the, by the renters. There would be a charge for the local taxes that would be imposed.
Yep.
And then the proprietor would forward those collections into the state, so it's not impacting the proprietor as much as it is the people who are renting those units.
And, and one of the things like you mentioned earlier was that we didn't have a, a health inspector, but now we do, I mean, part, part of it is we have to pay for the health inspector, and if there's no money in the fund to pay the health inspector, that's not an easy thing to get around, but if we have more things that collect money for the health inspector, we'll, we'll definitely have a health inspector if we can fully fund it.
Could I ask what you charge a night for your Airbnb?
I'm not one yet.
I don't know.
Just to clarify something too, the board of health, that's a different regulation, that's for renters, like actual landlords.
And, and that's the meeting that I-
That's the one that's not gonna be going to town meeting at all, that's next week, this room, I think 5:30 maybe. You talk to Subway too.
Just as a simple calculation, if the fee was $150 a night, 6% would be $9 per night that the, the renter would have to pay.
Right.
If it was $200 a night, then of course, that'd be $12 at 6%.
Yeah.
So, it's-
It's not a big, it's not a big addition.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so what's the board's pleasure for this general bylaw?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we advance this to the board of selectmen for their alerted opinions in action.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor to send it to the board of selectmen?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Okay. Puts the ball back in their court. Those are the planning board as the complete streets committee, number eight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to get into this a bit if I may, a little chronology, and it does go back into the previous month. On the 27th of February, I was invited to participate in a Zoom meeting with the town planner, and Bill, please keep me on the straight and narrow and I don't go off track here. Fire chief, police chief, the town administrator, two representatives from Tygen Bond, and was that the full assemblage, Bill? And that meeting, the invitation to that meeting was dated the 27th of February, the meeting itself took place on the 28th. Quite honestly, Mr. Chairman, I was flattered that I would be, have, have opportunity to discuss the issue which at hand was the intersection at Airport Road, Dudley Road, and Tanya Road. It was a lively discussion, that's one way to characterize it, at least on my part, on the 28th. There was no recording of that meeting nor minutes taken, as I recall. There were two items at the end of the meeting, one was the police chief was gonna check something with the schools with regards to the schools, the kids going through the intersection, and the second one was Tygen Bond was, they were gonna go out to try and come up with a number as to what cost of the sidewalk would be if it were on the side of the golf course as opposed to the opposite side. Subsequent to that, I received an email from the town planner indicating that there was consensus, that we would go forward with the plan as presented. Which was interesting, because I didn't recall that we had taken a vote on anything, and I don't know how word consensus would apply. And I'm not trying to throw Mr. Scanlon under the bus, I appreciate his making me aware of this, because I suspect that no one else in town hall was inclined to do so. There's also a reference in the email that Bill sent, there's guys, the staff, no one at that meeting was identified as staff. I, I, assumptions can be made, certainly, but the sum and substance of it is there was an agreement somewhere along the line, which I was not party to, and would have thought as a participant I might have opportunity to be part of, to go forward with something. Subsequent to that, early on, there was a posting of the agenda for the March 11th selectmen's meeting, which was to be a joint meeting of the planning board and the board of selectmen. Somehow mysteriously, the joint meeting was no longer a joint meeting, a few days later, it was, our planning board activity or participation was deleted from the agenda. And then at the meeting, this, this is a mini, some really crazy discoveries or amazing discoveries here. I was made aware, and perhaps there's something I've missed and you were aware of, that we have a shared streets committee. Surprise to me, I know we have a complete streets committee, of which we are the complete streets committee. Well, in any event, apparently, the town administrator has made several references to the streets, shared streets committee, and introduced the members to those being the members of the plan. My office script, it all in, okay. It appears that the, as I understand it from the town administrator, the complete streets committee's work is finished, and from that, I understand, I would understand that we have no role, and submitted, maybe we should consider disbanding. A couple of documents that Mr. Scanlon has shared with me of late, one is the contract, and one is the application, I think it was made. Interestingly enough, in those documents, there are, and surprisingly, several, many references to the complete street committee. No references to the shared streets committee, and this was the document signed and forwarded to the State Department of Transportation by Mr. Rubin, signed several times with his name on it. So, I, I'm still at a loss as to how this shared streets committee functions, what it does. I will be submitting the press with public records in terms of trying to find out what their minutes or, and agendas were, as I don't, I think it really existed. But in any event, we'll see what they, they are able to turn up. So, I'm not sure what we have here, it looked as though there were two committees, ours, complete streets committee, which was agreed to by the town, signed by the chair of the board of selectmen in September of 2020. And there is somewhere in the weeds, and if you look on the town website, you won't find it, it's not there. There's the former, what is it, Open Space and Recreation Committee, which has lapsed, that's still listed. The shared streets committee is not. So, I'm not sure what their function is, how it works in conjunction with ours, one would hope that both would somehow come together and be some synergy there, but given the fact that this thing seems to be somewhat new to the table, I'm not sure what place we have. I was, it was, I will mention just one other thing too, if I may. I, Mr. Scanlon was good enough to share some documents with me, I hope he doesn't suffer any consequences accordingly. This is the Mass Department of Transportation Exhibit C Environmental Punch List Shared Streets and Spaces Program. And as we've seen with our ANRs, we have a punch list, and we indicate yes and no. This page, there are 11 items, and it's indicated to put on, you know, to check off either yes or no. There's no checks on any of them, I don't know how the state approved this thing. This is something we've routinely kicked back to applicants where they haven't completed the form, but as you can see, there's nothing there. I mean, there's, there's a process here, which I think has circumvented this body and the complete streets commission committee.
Well, now, I think that maybe it's time to revisit the complete streets policy that was approved by the board of selectmen, it established the planning board as the complete streets committee, and it gave various charges to the planning board to investigate how to make our streets safer and more accessible to people of all types. So, maybe we need to just pick it up again and, and see what we've accomplished, has it worked well, has it, what do we need to improve? And just, I think we have the example of this project that went forward without the planning board involvement.
The only-
Perhaps we could, you know, think about how to improve, you know, the, the way these kinds of projects are handled in town.
Jim, and if I may, a couple of points, one is, it would be nice to see a shared streets committee policy. We have one, and it's dated September of 2020, that's open and that's to the public, and no one, we're not hiding anything there, that's a real deal. I'd like to see what their real deal looks like, if you will. And unfortunately, in the weeds here, and this is the thing that maybe is most upsetting, is there are some good things that they're looking to do. Procedurally, I think they've gone over the, all over the landscape in terms of the way they've gone about this, and they, apparently, I mean, appearances can be one thing, a reality, something else, but my understanding of the appearance is they didn't really want our involvement at that meeting on March 11th. I think the fear, or there was a question in terms of what I may raise or might raise at an issue at a public meeting before the selectmen, and I think the feeling at town hall somewhere was to avoid my being a participant or a recognized participant. I was able to speak from the floor, but not as a part of any constituted body.
So, so Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but the complete streets program, that was the program that we were able to get $400,000 granted to us to do all the sidewalks on Mason Road?
Yes.
From the fire station up past the school. And we, because we received that grant, we have to wait, it's three years before we can reapply?
I think it's a four-year wait.
It's a four-year waiting period, but the new, the new grants are, have been elevated to $500,000?
Yes.
So, you can get up to $500,000, but we have to wait the four years to ask, so we, we've gotten that one, that one grant, we can get in line and we can get the, the next grant after our four years is done. So, this complete streets committee, being the planning board, we don't have to be disbanded, do we?
Well, I don't know what our role is, Mr. Chairman, but I will say this, I did check in regards to the shared streets committee, if you will, checking with the state, and I have an answer here from Amber Valen Court, she is Community Grants Coordinator, Highway Division, Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Community does not need a committee for any of our grant programs. Now, we do need a committee for the complete street grants. We don't need a shared streets committee, apparently according to the State Department of Transportation, and I have additional emails from CMRPC and from a gentleman on what's called mass planners, indicating that is the case, that shared streets apparently is, does, does not have any standing or recognition with regards to applying for grants. It's not a necessary item, necessary function. But it is there, according to the town administrator, who sat in that very same seat and made the announcement. No, 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 please, I wouldn't put that on anyone, all right, let me take that back.
I think, I think part of the problem is that the complete streets program actually calls for a citizen committee to oversee the process. The shared streets program does not call for a citizens committee, so as a result, it became a staff function. So, the town administrator, myself, highway superintendent, and the police chief were, were working with Ty and Bond on this intersection improvement. So, I bet, I don't know if you'd call it a committee, you could, I suppose, but it's not intended to be the same kind of a public body as the complete streets committee is.
But we're not talking about this kind of money that complete streets is willing to give up for the sidewalk projects.
Well, we are, because this, we got $200,000 for the shared streets, we got $177,000.
Okay.
And allow $200,000, so it's, well, it was half of the complete streets, but it's still significant money.
But, but if I, I, I watched the video of the board of selectmen's meeting, and I think they said it was gonna cost upwards of $400,000, what they're proposing?
Yes.
So, the other, the other-
Chapter 90. Chapter 90.
$200,000, more or less, would come from chapter 90 money?
That's the proposal. The Selectmen could, could authorize use of chapter 90 money for this purpose.
Okay. And this is just basically their best plan for straightening out the Tann Yard Road, Airport Road, Dudley Hill Road intersection?
See, we, the Planning Board, you know, have worked with CMRPC on the prioritization plan. And that identified over 20 specific projects that needed to be done. And if we waited to only use the complete streets program, it would take forever to get that all done. So occasionally, other programs come up, like the shared streets, there's a safety school program. So we try to be nimble and think, okay, here's a pot of money that the state has, what can we direct, you know, that money to in town? And so it's, it's kind of just, you know, we try to identify funding sources and then make the improvements that best fit that program.
Going back a bit, if I recall the comments made by the town administrator, our work was finished when we came up to that list.
I think.
I think he was pretty obvious with that. I don't think there was, you know, we can't parse that.
I mean, I think the.
He was, he was pretty adamant, that was, he did the list, he could go home, goodbye, good riddance, I don't want you in the way.
We have a written policy. There's a written policy, the complete streets policy.
Well, the policy was never discussed. It was, it was his determination. He didn't make reference to the policy. As far as the plan, as I said, there are some good things with regards to this plan. Is it the best plan? Well, we had an option in terms of the one that was a little more impactful, if you will, with regards to Tann Yard Road, that might have been the best plan. I don't think anyone's characterized this as the best plan. I think people have maybe considered it to be the one that might be acceptable to the largest number of people. But best is still at some distance, I suspect. And again, I still don't know, have clarity from the town administrator or from anybody in this building right now as to where the two committees combined, if they do, if they're on separate paths, are they on opposing paths? You know, are these two ships looking to collide in the night somewhere? Or are they just going to end up at a dry dock?
I mean, I think it's, from what you just said, Mr. Clark, I think it's, it's, it's basically two different programs, as Bill explained. Some, you know, we, we can't get in, we can't get every program every year because of the waiting period, so they go to different programs to try to get, to try to continue the sidewalk process. And, I mean, given the, the little amount of sidewalks we have in town.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we gotta crawl before we can run here. So, I mean, if we get a sidewalk on one side of the street, it's better than no sidewalk at all, regardless.
Mr. Chairman, I will be on, I think I am on record at every meeting that I've attended and a word sidewalk has been presented in favor of that sidewalk, wherever the darn thing happened to fall. And I will concede that I have on occasion compromised to get something called the sidewalk that is probably not to the letter of the definition, in terms of maybe Sophie's Way as an example, we get something. But I have, I think, been consistent, if nothing else, I get loud, but I do want to, you know, garner that one attribute, if you will, is consistency in advocating for sidewalks. And if there's anybody here that hasn't heard me, do so, then please let me know what date you weren't here.
All right. So basically, what I've got out of this is there's two different programs.
And we need to, if we're going to work, I mean, if they're going to be two, then why not make it one? Why not make it two that work together? Why have one told effectively, you're out of business at a public meeting? Where that body isn't even present? I mean, that's a heck of a way to find out, we don't need you anymore.
Well, my suggestion would be.
I mean, seriously, if you were an HR function, somebody'd be bringing you to court today for that.
I think we should review the policy.
Okay.
That on the agenda for the next meeting and then.
There's also other, there's also other programs other than these two that we're talking about currently, right?
Yes.
Because there's the one that, for the safe routes to school and all this, and we haven't even approached that yet.
Nope.
We're waiting.
We're waiting.
Yeah.
But I mean, like, there's a possibility we could get one of those too and, and do some work either on Mason Road or Dudley Oxford Road.
We're doing the sidewalks in the vicinity of the Stevens Mill.
Yeah.
Under the, the Mass Works Grant that we got.
Right.
So that's another example of there's a funding source that we went after and were able to get it, so.
And that's, and that's the work that we're doing with the water, Water Means?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sewer.
Sewer means, okay. Okay. All right.
No, I, I, I'm on board, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a role here, I think the more the merrier. I don't know if that was intended as, you know, an action plan for us in terms of already just fading into the, into the shadows, if you will, or if there's opportunity to work with this other committee, membership of which I'm still not completely certain. But it, coming from that meeting on 3/11, I have serious issues in terms of what the Selectmen and the town administrator, what their view of the complete streets committee is, and if they refer to the policy, I don't know that they're thinking is consistent with that policy.
So Bill, do we need, do we need the Board of Selectmen's approval for the complete streets? Because they're the highway superintendent?
Well, the, the complete streets policy was signed and approved by the Board of Selectmen. So we do have their support for the Planning Board being the complete streets.
Right, and I don't see, I don't see any ending date on this.
No. I don't believe there is either.
Okay.
I think it, it asks for the Planning Board to stay involved and to monitor things and identify deficiencies and continue to work on improvements.
Okay.
And make sure that town projects comply with complete streets standards.
So then it's good, it's business as usual for us?
Right.
Well, all I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is if we have business as usual, then let us have a place at the table and let us have a voice, as opposed to the magic that occurred earlier on where the agenda changed. I don't know what spirits were at play at that point, but there was obviously a change and a difference. I think I read that as clear message that we were not welcome.
All right, so can we?
I, I'm easily disrespected, I guess you'd say, today's what I can.
So let's, let's see if we could make a vote of the Planning Board to request that the Board of Selectmen would invite us to any meeting, have a joint meeting with us on any, any meeting that involves sidewalks in the future.
I would ask that before we are invited to a meeting, we ask for some clarification as what that board sees as our role going forward.
Well, that's why I see.
Something in writing.
Well, I think we should review it first and decide what the Planning Board's role should be, and then have that discussion with the Selectmen.
I thought the Planning Board's role was already identified in the policy that was agreed to by the Selectmen back in 2020. If it's changed, I'm not aware of the change having been made.
I think we should just talk about it some more and see where, you know, what it says and make sure that everybody's comfortable with it.
Okay. So it's in our packet, we can read it, review it again?
Yeah.
Because it's, it is four years old.
Okay.
All right. Next on our agenda. Standard business, discussion status reports on finishing construction of, acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpont Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farm Estates, Lion Estates, and Sophie's Way. Do we have any updates on those, Bill?
Well, the Selectmen's agenda had an item to take the Country View Estates escrow to fix the sewer pump station.
And then I heard it was tabled.
It was tabled because the amount that we have available is not enough to finish the, the project.
Okay.
The Water and Sewer Commission had decided that they would not add any additional money of their own to the project. So there's not enough money to repair the station out of the escrow. So we're at the point of, how are we going to come up with additional money?
What was the shortfall?
I don't have an actual number.
It doesn't matter if it's $10 or a million dollars.
Right, no, I think it goes back to the betterment process as well.
Right, so that's what I was going to say, can we, can we get the letters?
One option, yeah.
Can we get the letters out to the homeowners on that street so we can explain to them what the situation is and they can?
We could if you think that that would be the way to go.
Sewage Commissioner wanted to take this town council at that meeting.
To do what, Tom?
Take the town council. If this guy's walking away, no one has paperwork saying he walked away, then.
Well, the other issue is that, at some point in time, they're going to want the street accepted, the people who live there. And I mean, if, we had a very mild winter, so, you know, if, if the gentleman went to Florida and didn't hire anybody or contract anybody to plow the streets, they may, they may have gotten by this year, but if we have blizzards next year.
I, Mr. Chairman, I do recall, I went up there after one of the, one of the few storms that we had, and it had been plowed. I didn't see who plowed it, but it had been plowed.
But somebody did it.
Somebody did it.
But I mean, like, we should, we should at least, I think, explain to the people what the situation they're in and maybe not have them come when we're having a public hearing, but on a meeting when we're not having a public hearing, have them come in and we can explain to them the betterment process and see what they want to do. Because I think Mr. Sullivan was adamant that the roadway needs to get looked at because it's been so long. And he said that there was some cracking going on or something. I haven't been over there in a while, I don't know. Last time I was there, it was in pretty good shape, but maybe there's something going on.
Our focus has been on the pumps, but certainly there's, this is the package in terms of this being accepted. There may be other issues at play, and the longer it's delayed, obviously, the cost of the residents is going to go up out of the process.
I mean, the good, the good news is that there's a lot more houses on that street than most cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, it's a good stretch.
So, okay, so yeah, Bill, if we could get him a letter and then invite him to a meeting, like I said, when we don't have a public hearing.
Okay.
If we could invite them, was it Mr. Hany, is that the gentleman's name?
Yeah, we can include.
Yeah, we can include him, Mr. Hany.
Give him, give him a letter too.
I, I, I know he hasn't responded to any correspondence, but.
I would do a joint meeting with Sewage and Water.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
If they're going to all be here, might as well invite them, so them pointing the finger at us and us pointing the finger at them.
That's not a bad idea. Ask the Sewer Committee to come at the same time.
That's what happens at their meeting, to plan and figure this out.
Bring them all.
Why, why did they fill that?
I don't know. They didn't watch that meeting yet.
No.
They said they didn't want to do it because they would have to pay the extra money.
Yes.
They weren't going to cover it.
I say whatever we have left in there, we get Graves out there, find out what exactly needs to be done, like Senior Selectman Sullivan was saying. And, and we figure out exactly what needs to be done, because all they need is an ASB too.
Yeah, and we know we need an ASB. What I was told, it can be more than that.
That's going to be way more than that now.
I was, I was told that, that all the measurements were taken by an engineer, and he just had him put it on paper. So it was only a matter of the, of the developer calling the engineer, his engineer and telling him to.
And that's from the developer, right?
Right.
This is a developer we had no contact with, so that's, I don't know if that goes very far.
So, I was hoping we could really get this done this, this spring.
It would be.
So I'm disappointed that the cost was greater than what we had available. So it's going to take another year to, to sort this out. If we go the betterment route, you know?
We could, we could get lucky, maybe we could get it, get, you know, the betterment into the, into the fall, this year's Fall Town Meeting and, and be on the, on the road to success.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right. Inspections and actions associated with site plans, Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, SEP Solar, Oxford Avenue, JD&amp;D, 24 Oxford Avenue, Stevens Mill, solar project on the landfill. Do we have any updates?
So on the JD&amp;D project, there was supposed to be a poll hearing with National Grid to supply power to that site that was disabled at the last meeting. It's not scheduled for the next meeting, but I think the meeting after the next Selectment meeting.
So in April?
I believe so.
Okay.
So hopefully, we can get that, that poll situated properly and then provide power to the site.
Okay.
And I think should be the last item that needs to be done to finish that project.
Mr. Chairman, Legacy Landing, Country Club Estates, and I know I've had to recuse myself in the past on this, so I'm not sure if I'm speaking as a member of the Planning Board or as a resident.
Move over there.
Mr. Chairman, Richard Clark, Airport Road, had a conversation with some of my new neighbors. And they have, according to what I understand, each of them has a list of issues to address with the developer. What I'm hoping is, and I know we granted, as I recall, 21 waivers. I mean, we basically threw the book out and rewrote it, if you will. So I'm not sure where all these things would stand necessarily, but what my fear is, is that we are maybe approaching something that will be akin to what we experienced with Eisenhower, where we have a contractor who's not in town, working on other projects, God knows where, leaving behind something that is less than it should be or could be. And I know we've got an ASB, I believe, and at least that's coming to us. I don't know what, if anything else, we've allowed out the door or not, but I wouldn't, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable in terms of leaving people with something, potentially leaving people. And we don't know if these things will ever be resolved or somehow mediated. But they're, they're, the, the folks aren't entirely pleased. One of the big issues is apparently that they were sold the bill of goods, they were going to get natural gas, and they've got propane tanks. And there's some, some of the concrete work is not what it was supposed to be. So it's, 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 again, what was advertised kind of versus the reality. You know, and it's the private road, so we're not looking at town acceptance, but they are town residents.
Right, and so there's, there's not a lot we can do in, in, on their behalf just because it's a, you know, it's basically a condominium complex.
And they have a homeowners, you know, association, and I did speak with a member of that in official capacity, his, he has an official role with that body. And I did say that, you know, that to pay attention to the Planning Board meetings and, you know, to come in here and if there is issues that we can do or be of some use or some help to them, I certainly, as, as, you know, courtesy to any resident, we would be willing to hear their concerns.
Bill, is, the way this, this subdivision was built, what was the, was there a covenant on this? I can't remember how we did this one.
He put up cash, didn't he?
Was that?
He put up like 600, yeah, four, I thought it was four.
I forget, I, I can check.
If you could look at that and let us know, that would be good.
Okay.
And then they haven't asked for any kind of final inspection by Graves or anything yet.
No.
So.
I think the last thing they had was they asked for an extension.
Right. And I believe they gave it.
We gave, we gave him a year or two years.
One year.
One year, because I think he was originally asking for six months. So, okay. But if you could let us know when, when, when that covenant's going to expire and when, and what we have for holdings for that.
Okay.
Subdivision, that would be good to know. Next thing on our agenda, Planner's Plate.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Stevens Mill, anything?
No, I haven't heard anything, no.
Shucks.
I just, I would like to, you know, remind the Board that they have to, well, anybody who's up for election this year has to pull nomination papers.
Who's up for nomination?
I believe you are, and Tom.
Okay.
And anybody in the audience certainly can run for the Planning Board if they want to pull papers. They're due April 22nd. So I, I believe you're both up for three-year seats, three-year terms.
Mr. Clark and myself?
No, Tom.
Mr. Schenck.
Tom and you.
Okay.
Steve Witroba.
He can have it.
Mr. Chairman, your dedication to this board is legendary. We're not going to let you off that easy.
I'm glad we give it to him, thank you.
And then there will be a workshop on the Fun Zone. As you know, we're working on plans to put in a new playground there. And the workshop will be to identify what kind of playground equipment kids want, want there, so that the designer can then work that into his, his plans. So I think that's going to be on April 8th during the Selectment's meeting.
So is the, is the playground a less expensive venture than what was originally planned, where they were taking out the parking lot and doing all the other stuff?
Well, the overall plan hasn't really changed. It's been tweaked, but the thought is to do both an active playground and then a passive space with a quiet seating area and for community events and sort of a natural area[1734.66] with a quiet seating area and for community events and sort of a natural area for kids to roam and do sort of informal play. But because that cost is so high, we're breaking it out into two phases. The first phase being the active recreation site or the replacement for the Fun Zone, because we think that's the higher priority, that's what people in town have been asking for the most is, when is that playground going to reopen? So the thought is to do it in phases and apply for a grant to help fund that portion of, of the project. And then, so initially, in preparation of that application, we're having this workshop to see what people really want there and how, what kind of equipment the kids would find, you know, most enjoyable.
They're going to rip it out and it's going to sit there for another five years like the bridge?
So the playground is actually going to move, it's going to go up to the fenced area now. And then where it currently exists, we'll stay that way until we get to phase two.
Park and water.
One of the, I'm sorry, but one of the things that was an advantage down here is we have some shade trees there. I don't know what the situation is up the hill, but I know people of a certain age, speaking from my own demographic, being in the sun, was, you know, okay for a while, but not forever.
I think we got very good support for the overall concept.
Get some copper tone. There was one other thing I wanted to make mention of. There is a survey, I don't know, is that terminated now?
The gateway.
The economic development?
The gateway survey.
Gateway survey. That's another committee that there's some, I don't know, there's some opportunity, I think, for us to have interaction with on occasion. And they meet mornings, I believe.
Once a month.
Once a month, and at a morning day.
They beat the third Tuesday of the month at 10:30.
We've got these, I hesitate to use the word because it was not well received on Monday, but we have these silos, you know, we've got these committees that exist and never the twain show meet, you know.
Yeah, pretty soon you're going to be on all of them. It'd be good.
Don't make that emotion, please. But there's, it seems that there's an opportunity that we're losing here, are things that might be done better collectively as opposed to these individual efforts, which, yeah, hopefully, they all get to the finish line and it looks nice in the end, but there's, the opportunity is, is, is not there. All right, so much for that.
That's it for me.
Oh, CMR PC meeting tomorrow evening, Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Comments from the audience.
Any other comments from the planning board first?
No.
Okay, comments from the audience. Mr. Chanacki?
Would you sign in, sir, please, if you haven't already?
No. I bring my press secretary, what I like, Julia. Press secretary. She can handle the press, TV committee or whatever. Oh, I got it. Oh, you got my phone. I just, I have a group of people who call ourselves Dudley Patriots. And there are most of them old people, which looking for some tax break. This is the worst idea, but they have question, that's, they sent me and her only. Solar project and landfill. Why are you guys spending money? Oh, I need, I just need, I don't know if you can do it. One question, how much going to cost for one kilowatt hour to build that solar panels? We're paying now 40 cents for kilowatt hour, right? How much you going to cost you to, to put panels there? I know the panels are scam. Why are you guys doing that?
It doesn't cost us anything, it's not us that's doing it, it's not the town.
Yeah, but somebody's paying, that's why, you know, I know, going to cost probably 400 kilowatt hour.
Right, but it's not the town that's paying.
I know, somebody, some guts money, borrow money from China, I know they doing it. But, yeah, I just wanted to find out how much going to cost, for example, if you can send us some letter, if you can do it.
We're not, we're not, we're not, the only thing we did was the site plan review for the.
Yeah, and then the selectmen took it from us.
Yeah, how big that going to be? And I, I, people got problem because we have problem on Eagle Drive water, and town is doing nothing to help us. That's another project.
Plan is to go through your land and put in a water line.
Yeah, but.
Can they contact you about that?
This is story which camera, I, I hate this place so much, planning board place, because I was screw up on millions here with smart people. And when we start project on Eagle Drive, we had plans to put the water line and sewage line there. I was in the plans, decline, decline, put moratorium on water line. Now I know we have money to finish the Eagle Drive, but now they're going to rip off the road and I won't let you do it. You have to take me to court or you have to buy the street. I just, that's my opinion, at least you're going to know what's going on. In the meantime, people, I think, they go together, they're going to sue the town for damages. And town going to be screwed badly. This is my, that's what I know.
My well was tested today, and I asked the lady that.
Yeah, this is another project, Stevens Mill. Stevens Mill, do you know, going to be like after few years, going to be like ghetto in New York? It's going to happen, that project. How much money town is planning to, to put in that project?
We're not planning on putting any money.
That's what, that's good, I'm going to put zero. Okay? Okay.
Which, which budget?
How much money are we planning on putting in Stevens Mill?
Stevens, because they're going to be involved, the water lines.
Tax agreement.
Yeah.
But there is a private development, it's private funded.
The first, maybe seven or eight years, there's zero taxes, and then it gradually increases to four.
Because that project never going to go. They're going to borrow money from everywhere and they're going to go bankrupt, what I telling you now. Because the rent's going to be two, $3,000 a month, who going to afford in people in Dudley or rents like that? That's, I'm going to be just drugs dealers around us, but anyway, that's my. Now I got a bridge, what's happened with the bridge? Nobody's doing nothing?
At the selectmen's meeting, it was mentioned as being years in the future.
Not, not, yeah.
There is some thought to using a temporary bridge, which is going to, and cost in excess of a million, between a million and $2,000, I recall.
Maybe not quite that much.
I think we're still some distance or some time away from a decision on that.
Do you ever thought of how to pay for that?
I have, I, I have some connection, I can find out how much going to cost to build it.
We know how much it costs, but.
Oh, I know, your numbers, which is three times more than Boston, I know those.
We are bound by prevailing law, so it's a different deal.
The town could pay for it, there's nothing stopping the town from having an article to fund the project.
Yeah, they're going to borrow money.
Trying to find grant funding.
Well, I think the gentleman could get that on the agenda, I mean, on the warrant.
I'm going to put some article on, or warrant, that's another, people listen, watching me now. I'm going to put some article on the warrant in May. Because of that stuff, the parks, I think, another walk pro project, right? You have money for parks, you have no money for insurance, like open the beach in Dudley. You have no money to, to run even that project. That's another thing.
Most of the questions you're asking, you need to be asking to the Board of Selectmen, we're only the planning board.
I just, I just wanted to inform you and please listen here. Rocky, Rocky Estate, that's what I, I told you, I don't know what the other guys going to do. Because we have money to finish, I don't want to finish road if you're going to rip off completely. Going to be like on Fairview Avenue or Warsaw Avenue, going to be that kind of roads they're going to leave.
That's horrible.
And I was ready to put road, and, and town, no, they put moratorium to shut me down. And now I come and after 30 years or whatever, 40 years, good luck, guys. Selectmen are too.
Can I ask why you haven't finished the subdivision and asked the town to accept the votes?
Because we were doing whatever is not so many lots, lots left now. We have money to finish. Now I cannot finish because the road going to be completely destroyed. All Fairview, Eagle Drive, all of them, they're going to put water line there.
Well, the water lines are necessary for public health because.
Yeah, but it's private, private road. That's when you have to.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting if you bring it forward for acceptance, then you don't own the road anymore.
No, 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 you, you screw up here, not you. Plan town screw up here for so many years, that's me know, I, I manage it. Anyway, this is what outside they ask, people ask me not to.
You have to finish all the lots before the town will accept it back in time. They didn't want to take it in phases, kind of like what they did with Tony.
Oh, another question, what the people got. On Oxford Avenue, people were dumping a lot of dirt there, what happened? They changed their hands, they sold that place, and planning board should know about it.
Ramco's site?
Ramco place.
Was Ross in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it got sold.
Yeah, but the guy, they, they bring the stuff illegal. I see the papers, they said exactly from Boston, I got copy. And they said that it's very highly toxic, but, but it's up to code, saying something like that. If it's toxic, you pull this, it's illegal dump.
You've got to talk to, to the selectmen, because they're the ones that.
I know, but I, at least I am telling you now, because.
The ones that voted to approve MCP.
Yeah, but planning board has signed the papers somehow.
No, that was all selectmen.
Board of Health, maybe the new guy, Pat Henning.
One of the more recent things is they opened that up for whatever coming across the line from Connecticut, whereas I think it had been restricted to Massachusetts only for, for at least initially, and now they've opened it up to Connecticut as well. And I'm sure the good folks in Connecticut are sending only their best.
Well, no, if you watched that thing, Ramco said most of his dirt come from Connecticut too. But then he said Mass DEP regulates it, so who knows what's in there?
Well, I, that is a good question.
Who knows, who knows? Watch that meeting where Mr. Marthy approved that.
The people have, that's what he has questioned. Oh, another one was nothing, I am going to ask you about that marijuana, nice guy like crazy. Oh, friendly, he said, I bring so many. People can walk there and stuff like that, and I was ready to ask him, how many grace we have to dig for that people you're going to kill? That's what I asking. And we're going to go with whatever we can, even we're going to demonstrate to shut down that place. He has no water, it's going to cost $300,000 to put just water line there. And you denied another people to connect the houses because it's moratorium, whatever. That's me, at least you know what's going to go. But that guy is, you know, is, I hate those people. And a lot of people going to be, going to be demonstration that that's me, that guy is very nice, but business is business. That's true. Oh, no, no, no. Okay, thanks a lot, guys, I, I be here or I'm going to bring 200 people next meeting, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, at least you know what, what I'm standing for and we try, I try help special the old people. Got some tax, tax break on there, that's what I try to do. Dudley Patriots, you want to sign with me? You're welcome.
Bring us concerns, the Board of Selectmen.
Let's go.
All right. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be March 17th in this room.
27th, I saw.
Oh, sorry, 27, yeah. 27, 2024. Vouchers and approval of bill payments. We have one from Graves for Sophie's Way, $1,520.03, and another one from Graves for Pearpon Estates, $1,048.06. Would we like to make a motion and a vote that we can have the town planner pay those two vouchers?
Chairman, I would move that we pay Graves invoice 38872, Sophie's Way estimate as 100, oh, I'm sorry, $1,520.03, and Graves invoice 38840, estimate $1,048.06, completion estimate.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Okay, other town notices. Sorry? Mr. Dergan? Other town notices, ZPA approval of the shared driveway special permit for Old South Bridge Road Cabab Realty Trust.
That's included in your binder under other business.
And that was the gentleman that was in here talking to us, and we told him that.
Yes.
We had approved the two, the two separate driveways plus the, the original one, so he had, had three driveways, but now he's cut up an approval for five in one?
Right.
Okay.
So it says, the zoning board unanimously voted 5-0 to allow the applicant a special permit for a driveway to service five lots set forth in the plan dated 1/31/2024. So apparently, he went with the, the one driveway with the five lots.
Okay, that's his prerogative.
First of all, I just thought you'd be interested to know how that worked out.
Thank you very much for the information.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if there's any other correspondence, Bill, or?
I think we're good?
We're good, okay.
Motion with Jerry?
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.